Call the village board meeting to order. Roll call.
President Byrne?
Uh, aye.
Trustees Takaoka? Marquart?
Here.
Forster?
Here.
Oppenheim?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Schenk?
Here.
Okay, we have a court present. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Any citizens wishing to address the board tonight on anything other than what's on committee at all? If it's not committee at all, then you can address us, the committee at all.
Hi, my name is-
And who are you mask marauders?
My name is Sydney Silas. We are students at Vernon Hills High School. We are seniors and we're here for our AP Government Project.
Okay.
Yes, we're pretty much, uh, we're just here to like observe government happen in person and like take notes and then we have to like write a summary and uh, just pretty much tell our opinion on what happened.
Okay.
I'm Zach Sadez, by the way.
And, and you, you, why don't you all identify yourselves?
Well, I'm Alex Nieves.
What is it?
Alex Nieves.
I'm Michael Collins.
And your name again, the young lady?
Sydney Silas.
Okay. Alright, that's, alright, well, you gotta state a whole time.
Yeah.
You know, you're, you, you leave early, you know, are you looking for us to sign the, something that you were here?
Uh, no.
Yeah, you know.
We'll, we'll just point the camera towards you in the audience every now and then, just to-
Alright, so, uh, students, have a seat.
Thank you.
You're just taking mental notes, huh? Really? Well, you know, and, and, what is it, two days from now, we'll be on TV?
Tomorrow.
Oh, next day. Do you ever go, you ever watch this on YouTube? Yeah, okay, yeah. It was just as well you sit through this one.
You can put that in your report, see?
Yeah. Well, that's kind of quasi encouraging. Do you ever read the newspapers?
Yeah, with my dad sometimes.
Oh, does he read to you?
No, I'll like, we'll like sit on the couch together and just read it.
Really? So, so who reads it out loud?
Nobody.
Oh, you just look over each other's shoulder?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Don't discourage the government.
All he's gotta do is turn on the news and he'll be discouraged about government. Alright, uh, with that said, uh, let's see what we got here. Proclamation for Deputy Chief Williams, who's retiring. You sure you're ready to do that? Oh, Adam Blanca. Nah, it's time to double dip, let's go. Alright, you want me to do this, chief?
That'd be wonderful, thank you.
Alright, you know, Todd E. Williams began employment. Come to the presentation altar. Began employment with the Village of Vernon Hills Police Department, uh, on May 1st, 1993, and was honor, has honorably served the village in their capacity for 28 years. How old were you when you started?
I think I was about 22, 23 years old.
Really?
Yeah.
Just a kid. Well, you've aged, you've aged well.
Well, thank you.
Well, you know, I, you-
Can you add to the proclamation?
I can't relate to a guy like you, cause you're a big guy.
Yeah.
You, you got a lot of collagen, it makes you look younger.
That's what it is.
Todd, Todd served in the Investigation Unit from 95 to 99, was assigned to the Lake County Major Crimes Task Force from 97 to 2004, where he eventually became group supervisor of the specialized unit. Todd served as the Vernon Hills High School first, uh, SRO from 2019 to 2003, during which he developed the foundation for the position's, uh, successful run since its inception. Yeah, that's true, that opened in, yeah, 19, 1999.
1999, yeah.
Wow. Todd served as an officer in charge of, uh, several major, I don't know, patrol shifts from, uh, 2003 to 2006, served as patrol and investigative sergeant from 2006 to 2012, and was promoted to the rank of commander in, uh, 2012, when he served in both patrol and investigations. Todd was ultimately promoted to the rank of deputy chief in 2020, where he ran the Operations Division of the department. Todd involved himself with, uh, nearly every veteran's effort initiated by the department during his career, including helping to create the blue line for the frontline. That's still going, right?
It is, yes.
Okay. Uh, additionally, he created and ran the Jesse Goldsmith Scholarship Fund in 2008, which has donated tens of thousands of dollars to high school students locally and where, where is this? Hillsboro?
Hillsboro.
It's down south, eh?
Down south, Southern Illinois, that's where he grew up.
Oh.
And Vernon Hills High School, too.
No kidding, oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, God rest his soul, man, Jesus. So he's been dead, what, 10, 12 years now?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow. Yeah, he was, you know, he was a good officer. I know he arrested a judge one time.
A solid case.
Oh, yeah, that was, yeah, the judge was a solid citizen, too. Uh, okay, good. Todd, or, or, coordinated department's use of force program for over 10 years, during which time he created and implemented department's first taser initiation. You been tased?
I have.
Boy, okay.
One of the first.
Although Deputy Chief Patrillo, former Deputy Chief Patrillo was, I think, maybe one of the first two as well. Did you enjoy that moment?
We, we had a reenactment, we could play, and I almost forgot to cue it.
Okay, I'll bet you boys did. Todd, Todd also served as Vice President, Secretary Treasurer of the FOP Lodge 34, Secretary for the Vernon Hills PD Pension Board, and Group Leader for Lake County's IMAT Team. Todd accumulated numerous, uh, commendations and awards from both the department and outside agencies during his tenure career. Todd has been a great asset to the Village of Vernon Hills Department throughout his career and has served with professionalism and distinction. The residents of the Village of Vernon Hills have been greatly rewarded by Todd's service to the community as an officer, sergeant, commander, and now deputy chief throughout his 28 years. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the president and the board trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, County of Lake, extend to Todd E. Williams their gratitude for his years of service to the community and the law enforcement profession. Signed, past this day, the 2nd of November. Well, congratulations, now you're going on to- And now you're going on to, uh, be what, the Officer Friendly SRO at Vernon Hills High School?
That's exactly the title.
District 128.
Yes.
So, you could gather now, uh, a lot of information from, and do a movie like a John Hughes movie or something.
Okay.
You know, work, if you're gonna work at the high school,
Yeah.
you'll get like all kinds, you'll learn things going on, you know?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know.
Yeah.
You do a book and then, then somebody will pick up the, the, you know,
John Hughes was-
the screenwriter. Hughes was from Illinois.
No, he's from Glaubrook North.
Northbrook.
He was a classmate.
I, I would like to say that his work hasn't stopped since he's been at the high school, cause a couple of weeks ago, he helped my, uh, stepmother recover from a tumble down the, uh, the grass, so, thank you. She owes you a Milky Way, though.
We're gonna, we're gonna add her to the gymnastics team, I think.
Yes, yes. Yeah, she's already working out.
She's okay.
She's great, thank, and he followed up with, with us, with them too, so, thank you.
The snow fence isn't so stable sometimes, so.
And they, well, hopefully for guys like me, they got a lot of railings you could, you know, kinda hang on to when you're, if you're going into the building, not quite will too often.
Always remember, though, it's not the fall, it's a sudden stop.
There's the last foot?
Mayor, if I could, I just would be remiss to not, um, add my gratitude, um, on behalf of, uh, the village, uh, to Todd's service. Um, he, he was a, a hell of a deputy chief, a hell of a police officer, served our, uh, community well, and when you're a chief of police, you really get to know, um, the, uh, work ethic and the commitment and, um, uh, you know, Todd just set a very high bar. Uh, we're lucky as a community that he's, uh, although he's retired from the police department, didn't leave the community, and his new role is Director of Security at the high school, and given his, uh, tenure is, um, you, you just couldn't ask for probably a better place to, to have one of our retired officers wind up, so. So we're lucky to have him and, um, and, uh, I'll stop saying good things, since we're gonna have an appropriate, uh, retirement party for him and, and, and remind him of some of maybe the other things that he did in his career. So, Todd, would you like to say anything?
Sure, thanks for keeping that off of, uh, cable. The bad stuff, that is. No, I just wanna thank the, uh, village board. I wanna thank, uh, all the former and current employees that I worked with all these years, and certainly wanna thank the residents of this, uh, this village. Uh, it's, I've been extremely, uh, it's been my privilege to have served this village for over 28 years and, um, I've been very blessed and fortunate to have a safe career and to, um, have fulfilled a lot of different life goals, you know, I've, I've served in a lot of different capacities and it's, um, I owe it all to the village for giving me those opportunities and, uh, it's been a great ride, and I'm, uh, I look forward to my new role. Uh, I'll have to add a few things to the title, I guess. But, uh, I appreciate, I, I really am happy to stay in this community and, and work with, uh, you know, the high school, um, students, so. I'm, I'm very blessed, but I appreciate it.
So now with you going to the high school, we'll still have, uh, interaction with one of our officers still at the high school and, as we do at the junior highs and such.
Yes, sir.
Who, who is that officer now?
It's, it's, uh, SRO Dan Mead, he's over there, and it's-
Oh, okay.
working out really well, he's doing a great job.
Yeah.
He's very loved by, by all the faculty and students.
Yeah.
Uh, he's, uh, Mayor, he's also one of the few, um, police officers that Todd actually looks up to, uh, because Dan's like 6'6".
Yeah. We know who Dan is.
Yeah, and, and he has, uh, he has a partner, we have Courtney Blau, is our SRO at District 73, serves, uh, the middle schools and the elementary schools and, uh, works really hard. We're, we're, we're really fortunate to have, um, the ability to have officers in, uh, each of our school districts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know, how long, time, how long have we done that, huh? Decades, right?
Yeah.
Twenty years.
Yeah, going back to before the high school was around, we had SROs at the middle school and that.
What do we, do we, Kim Christiansen, did we serve with him as officer?
Well, and when we had the DARE program and that stuff too, so, yeah.
That going on?
I'm sure you don't have enough of these.
Uh, not really, I don't think.
No, the DARE?
Can you get the troops up here, too? Pretty faces, do you mind, Mayor, if we get a photo in front of the village board?
Nah, this is good stuff.
Good stuff.
Got it, thank you.
Work, no. Hey, where's Officer Mead at tonight? Well, it, it would've been nice if he came. Alright, you guys, you're gonna leave?
Yeah, that's right.
Alright, guys, take care.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Nice to see y'all, you know, within reason. Okay. I was gonna, I was also gonna say too, we, we, we were never brought into any, uh, civil litigation at all under Todd's tenure with the village. I mean, that's important to the mayor, at least, okay? Since sometimes crazy stuff happens. Okay, uh, what else we got here? The finances and the treasures report.
Then we have, uh, you have, yeah.
Yeah, he's got, you know, yeah, you got insurance stuff tonight, yeah.
Yep, we got-
Oh, there we go, reminder, holiday tree and menorah lighting. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a reminder, uh, the, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 27th at 4:30 PM, we have, are returning back to our holiday tree and menorah lighting. Uh, the event will be taking place at the Vernon Hills Muni. Uh, will feature hot chocolate, cider, and cookies for our guests, um, as well as an opportunity to take a picture in a, uh, Santa sleigh that was, uh, salvaged from the Forge Club, and, uh, thank you to, to Public Works and Trustee Marquart for acquiring that and, and getting that for the event. Um, also, Santa will be arriving around 4:30 PM escorted by Countryside Fire Protection District and our very own Vernon Hills Police Department, so mark your calendars for that. And, uh, second, just wanted to give a quick update on, uh, the 2020 census. If you remember last year, uh, our census takers were out in the community, uh, getting our current population counts. We just recently received our certified results from the Secretary of State's office. The, the new certified population for the Village of Vernon Hills is 26,850 residents. Uh, that's up from 25,113 from the 2010 census, so that's about a 6.9% increase, or about 1,700 residents. Um, just a little kinda recap on what the, the census really means for us. Uh, most importantly, we maintain our home rule status. Uh, we're still above the $25,000, or, excuse me, 25,000, uh, number of population, which is good, and also that number, uh, is important for some of our state shared revenues on a per capita basis such as, uh, income tax and motorfield tax and use tax, so, um, finally, we're, we're gonna be expecting some further demographic data in the coming months, uh, once the census has time to finalize that portion, so, look for that soon.
I was just gonna tell you too, I mean, if you're saying it's, it's at 26,000 and some, and change?
26,850.
Eight, eight hundred.
Eight fifty, oh, yeah, okay, that's close, cause I know we had in some, uh, uh, probably some reports that maybe went to, uh, where we told our story to the bond houses. We, and there's some document I've seen more than once, it says 27,113. So you do your research tomorrow. You know, this isn't Wakanda. Hey, I like Wakanda, but, you know, I like this place better. Okay, uh, is the, is there COVID protocol gonna be in place for the, the tree lighting and the menorah? We restricting the number of people in the building?
So that, yeah, the majority of the event will be taking place outdoors, we will have the inside open for, uh, I believe food and beverage in the restrooms. Um, the majority of the event will be outside where, right now, there's currently no restrictions for masks or anything like that.
Well, I understand that, but how are we gonna convey that to the general population? Have we already done that in email blasts or, or website?
Yeah, after tonight's board meeting, we've got our normal updates in the Village Voice and, uh, social media, et cetera.
Yeah, and, cause I was gonna say, you don't, you know, the, the capacity in, in the clubhouse is si, is 65 people, and there's been some of these, uh, celebrations where, you know, we kinda, we certainly tested the, the, you know, the max, so I, I bet we had 100 people in there a couple of times, you know? Uh, trustee Forster. Oh. Dr. Oppenheim.
So what, what's the protocol gonna be then for people to get food and still maintain social distancing? How are you gonna do that?
Line in, line out.
So we had a meeting today with, uh, Kevin Lynn, the GM from the Vernon Hills Muni, and what we've asked is, uh, the direction that we were given, uh, the last board meeting wants to do as much as we could outside, so the tables for, uh, the cookies, the chocolate and the cider will be set up outside.
Okay.
Uh, as mentioned, the sleigh was donated, and so this year, we're trying to set up something outside to draw people from, uh, having them not go inside, stay outside, so we're trying to set a stage for pitchers, uh, so most of the event will be outside. As traditionally done, there will be food and beverage for sale on the inside, and obviously, uh, the restrooms, uh, as needed.
Yeah.
Kevin has been briefed that, uh, our goal is for the entire event to be conducted outside, with the inside only used for the restrooms and anybody that needs or feels the need to purchase-
Are, are we gonna get like, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, so, so I guess I misunderstood, so that's just to purchase additional food in, inside, but the cookies and the hot chocolate, whatever, that's all gonna be outside?
Correct, we had, as, as shared, uh, we had a meeting today with Kevin, and it's been very articulated that we want the event to be conducted outside, and we want all the attractions and, uh, items that are being given away for free, uh, outside, so I'm hoping that'll, that'll happen. But as, in the past, the, uh, this has been a revenue generator for the muni, it's one of the, uh, few events during November where I would say, as the mayor said, uh, people do go, um, so, you know, unless there's direction from the board to not do that this year, uh, you know, the, the past practice has been for this to be a revenue generator as well for the month of November.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, if we had to roll that back, I don't have a problem with that at all, I mean, you know, just to, you know, where you, you're gonna cordon off that, your access to go to, to where the bar and the other tables are, you know?
So that, that is, that is an option.
I mean, it's-
There's a window to-
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, Christ, it, it, what if it rains or snows?
Yeah, that was fantastic, what's the contingency?
And then we, uh, everybody bring a, an umbrella, apparently, or people just stay home, too, if it's real bad.
Right, it's real bad, but-
But with that said, what about the pic, are we using some big heart district style picnic tables? You know, they're heavy, or they're just the folding tables from inside the building?
I, so I believe that the, uh, the round tables are gonna be brought out, and I believe that the tables are on, on the outside, uh, that we traditionally sit on are gonna be rolled, rolled over, uh, to the other side, that face the, uh, the steps, and people are gonna be coming in, uh, I'm hoping, single file in an orderly fashion to get, get an item and, uh, just go out the other way. So there's, there's an entry, uh, is-
Or there's two entries.
Right.
Or there's three entries.
Right, to, to the outside, so we're hoping that, you know, Kevin will have them, uh, lining up, single file, coming in and going in one direction, so it's not, uh, you know, I'll use the word a mob, we don't wanna mob or a gaggle of people.
What, you, what, the hot chocolate and the cookies are gonna be outside?
Yes.
So what, what do we, how we floating people through?
I, I'm hoping that there's going to be a single file line, the kev, Kevin said he's got a plan with his staff where they're gonna have people or, come in orderly and, uh, grab an item. Uh, this, this is a free event, so I do it, you know, I do envision a lot of people wanting to be there and get something, and, uh, when they get an item, continuing to flow through and go down the steps on the, it would be the east side.
You're talking about the food for purchase on the-
No, the, the free-
You're talking about the free stuff about-
The free stuff will be outside.
I mean, it's, it's not as much of a concern since it's outside, so we wouldn't, uh, really worry about that, but it-
But you're led to believe that there's a lot of people gonna eat there, you know?
Going inside, yeah.
So, and, and as you-
I mean, after the event.
As you've shared, Mayor, in the past, you know, in the history, uh, that we've been doing this 20, 25 plus years, there have been times it's been extremely cold and it's been used as a warming shelter, uh, there have been times that, uh, people do go and grab a drink, uh, at, at the bar.
Well, that's when, eh, half the free world was inside the clubhouse, you know what I mean? If you're circling people outside, I don't know, you know, eh, okay, well, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it in, eh, your capable hands and Kevin's and, uh, you know, we'll see what happens, you know?
And we're always, you know, always, uh, listening, if there's additional direction or a different path you'd like us to pursue. Uh, you know, I, I trust Kevin and Vince, Vince will be there as well, the, uh, you know, Kevin's boss, uh, they said that they've, they've got it, and I, I trust that this will be a, a great community event and we'll make it as safe as possible.
Yeah, alright, okay. And the hot chocolate and the cookies are outside, and hopefully, we got decent weather.
And, and we'll message, as, as the board knows, uh, Lynn Brandle covers village board meetings, and traditionally, about two to three days after the event, uh, all the messaging from this meeting, uh, will be distributed on all the communications platform.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we'll have additional messaging, just encouraging the community to avoid going inside, uh, unless absolutely needed and to minimize the numbers.
Yeah.
We will make it, knowing that the restrooms are available, but, uh, you know, we, we expect the community to, uh, do their best to, you know, limit, limit it, uh, the spread as well.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, nature will call, I'm sure. Okay, any other comments or questions on this one? Alright, uh, and you already did the 2020 US Census, right, Kevin?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, next thing is the ambiguous vote agenda, is there a motion?
Uh, um, Chief Hess, Chief Hess.
Oh, Chief! Oh, wellness check.
Let's do the wellness check.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to take a moment to update, uh, the board, uh, might remember that one of the department goals in this budget year was to enhance, um, the department support, emotional support, wellness support for our employees. Um, you know, we recognize that the stress that comes with the job of being a police officer, uh, telecommunicator or otherwise serving in a police department can, uh, can wear on people. Um, we unfortunately see, um, abuse of, uh, substances and suicide happen at a higher rate than the rest of the population and, and, you know, we can't ignore those things. We're, we're lucky we have a healthy workforce, but we don't take that for granted. Um, one of the things we were able to do this year is actually, uh, implement, um, a set of wellness checks, and we recently, um, completed this, and this is basically, um, an appointment that every, uh, police employee had with a clinician, uh, for about an hour, um, during the workday where they, uh, could sit down and not only have, um, you know, a counseling session, but also part of that, and a big part of that was making sure that our employees, um, were informed about how to get help and, um, how to see signs of coworkers and friends that maybe need help. Um, and, uh, I, I can tell you, I'm really proud of the organization that about 70 employees, everyone embraces, we got everyone through in about, uh, in about six weeks' time, um, really welcomed it, we, we see this as being an annual, uh, event for us. In addition, uh, one of our officers also has taken the lead, but it's a team of officers, have also implemented a peer support group with, uh, different levels of outreach, so if someone doesn't wanna come to the chain of command or to our employee assistance program, there's a handful of trained, uh, uh, police employees that can, uh, support one another, so. You know, I'm just, uh, like I said, I think it's, it's an important thing that we set out to do, um. Deputy Chief Levicki was a big part of, uh, helping implement this, and, um, I'm, I'm pleased to report the feedback, I, I met or I chatted with the, the head, uh, counselor, and these are specialist, uh, specialist, um, counselors that work with first responders. A lot of them are previous first responders in their previous, uh, uh, careers, but now are, uh, are all masters or higher trained psychologists to, uh, to help us, so. Uh, really happy with where we're at, and I just wanted to report that to the board, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, it's a great program to offer, cause it's a tough job.
Okay. Uh, okay, there's, nobody else has any speaking parts, so we'll go to the ambiguous vote agenda. Uh, is there a motion to approve items A through K?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Takaoka? Marquart?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, let's see, unfinished additional business, anybody?
I'll talk about a couple of things, if I could. Um, just to follow up on that, uh, discussion of solicitors, um, that were in the process of modifying the ordinance, ordinance. So, within days after, um, after that meeting, I noticed, uh, first there was someone in the median just south of, of Wendy's.
Correct.
There. So, sort of the left turn lane to go south towards Target and the, and the police station there, so there, there was someone there, and I called the, the police station to mention that, and they said that, um, well, first of all, they said that, well, I, I heard the village is working on that and we're, and we're waiting to hear back from them, and I said, well, we are working on that, but I thought that if they're in the median, whether or not it's in, in the intersection, that's considered the roadway, so that's why I just wanted to make it crystal clear, and they said, well, I don't know.
Sure, so, uh, you know, that, that, uh, action goes into effect officially today. Um, we had in, because of the lawsuit and us wanting to make sure we weren't overstepping our bounds, um, we, we have been taking a hands-off approach to most, most of those. We will be making additional outreach now, informing our officers of the new ordinance, um, but let me be clear, there's still gonna be violations, we're still gonna have people staying in the wrong area, and this would be one of many things that we kinda take an approach on to try and make an impact- on to try and make an impact, but it's, it, it, I, I don't want anyone to have the impression we're gonna be able to always solve the problem, I, I'm familiar with the person you're talking about, we're gonna have officers approach that person.
Right.
And direct them to the right part of that intersection, the, the part that would be, the part that would be in compliance with our ordinance, where she's standing.
Where's that?
So that would be on Lakeview, so if she stands on Lakeview in the median, that would not be in violation of our ordinance and, and ask people for, it's still maybe not a good idea, but we've drawn...
But it's still a flat concrete surface?
It is.
As opposed to on sixty where...
Well, sixty they go from...
That could get nasty when it rains and it snows, somebody could, they could get hurt.
All the reasons why we designated Route sixty, twenty-one, Butterfield and Route forty-five as, as off limits to allow for this.
Yeah.
So nowhere along the median on those, on those roadways, yeah, because I noticed then the other day, I noticed someone at sixty in Milwaukee, just, just east of the intersection.
So the ordinance was passed, takes two weeks to take effect, today's the first day it's taken effect, and we're, we've got a plan to inform our officers, and again, we do this in a, we roll it out slowly, try and gain compliance rather than enforcement and try and change behavior, but I just ask that you have some, you know, that the community understands it's gonna take us a little bit of time to, to do this.
Okay, you weren't, you weren't here last time, but part of my confusion was, is it anywhere along the road, it's not just at the intersection, but it's anywhere along the median, along the road?
Right.
Any of those roads?
Yeah, but they, they tend to stay at the intersections where cars stop.
Right, except, you know, if there's a long line of cars, they could be fifty feet back and still have stopped cars if it's, but that's still not a lot.
I think we're, okay, perfect.
Chief, can I ask you a question? If a vehicle unfortunately were to strike one of these on, say it was sixty or Milwaukee, and you guys come out, who would be at fault at that? I mean, given the circumstances, they're following the green light, they're following the flow of traffic, they may have stepped off the curb and clipped the mirror or something like that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's very much fact-specific to the particular circumstance, but you, I've seen scenarios where vehicles strike pedestrians in a roadway and the motorist is not cited, that the investigation determined that the motorist was acting appropriately, in, in fact, a pedestrian cannot be unsafe and have a right of way, so if they're in a crosswalk, by all means, they have the right of way and you have to stop, but it doesn't mean they can step in front of a, you know, a rapidly moving vehicle that's, say, moving at the speed limit and expect a vehicle to stop on a dime, so, very fact-specific though, with, you know, testimony of witnesses, the driver, any other drivers that we can talk to, and we all know it would be a tragedy regardless, but we would cite the appropriate person if, if the motorist should have exercised due caution and yielded to the pedestrian, they would, but if that's not the fact pattern, we would not cite a motorist for that.
Yeah, and with that said though, if the car somehow, some way hits a pedestrian or they slip and fall and they go under the car and you run over them, trust me, there's gonna be a civil lawsuit, you know, whether it's bodily injury or, God forbid, a wrongful death, and, you know, because, of course, we're in Lake County, so that, you know, you might get some relief as opposed to Cook County, which is a tougher venue, as we say. But, yeah, you, you know, you got modified comparative negligence in our state of Illinois, and, you know, you gotta prove that the other party's at least fifty percent or more at fault, so the pedestrian versus the driver would have to prove fifty to fifty-one percent to collect, but, you know, stranger things have happened, you know, not giving the, you know, to somebody a ticket, that's nice, but that's not the deciding factor, and, you know, anyway, it's, it's a, it could be a bad, it, it's unfortunate that these folks gotta do that, you know? So anyway, well, it sounds like you're working at it, Chief, and we'll go forward, you know?
Yes, sir.
And then if they start bandannling at the stores, the stores gotta call.
Yes, sir.
You wanna, you wanna pretend to be the Salvation Army guy, you know? All right.
I have a, I have another thing to discuss, and that's the Halloween hours, I don't know if that, if now is the right time, and unfinished business versus new versus whatever, so, we all got an email from a gentleman the other day asking us to modify our, our Halloween hours going forward, and I, I tend to agree with some of the points about it, I know it's a, it's a balancing act, kind of having it purely in daylight for the younger kids for safety, but then there's also the aspect of, you know, some of the older kids wanting to have a little bit of darkness to make it seem like it's actually Halloween, and, and for those residents who like to decorate their homes with lighted...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Things on, on Halloween, so...
So they, they're arguing four to eight?
So, yeah, four to eight, so I guess Halloween is, sunset's always around like five forty-five, so...
Could I report to the board?
If you could.
Yeah, if you would like to talk about, I'm happy to just provide some feedback to the board, and perhaps next year in September, we readdress it, I'll have a tickle to, to bring back to the board, but, so, since I last reported to the village board about this, I visited the PTO, the Hawthorne Elementary PTO, presented to them, had wanted, and, and how I presented it to everybody is the community's having a conversation about this, what to do next year, have Halloween traditionally on Monday in the evening, or keep it on the weekend before and keep it an afternoon hours event, I went out this year on trick-or-treating with a big bag of candy, visited a lot of neighborhoods as I did two years ago, asked parents that were walking around with children what they thought, talked to over seventy parents, eighty-five percent plus told me very clearly, unequivocally, they love the weekend afternoon trick-or-treating, and most of the people that said they prefer to have it in the evening said, but I get it, and it, this is a lot safer, I heard very vocally from one person that was very concerned about the decorations, and I guess my point is, you see the decorations all month long, you know, if people put up their stuff, it's, and we have this one email, so what I would encourage us to do is continue the conversation, look for more feedback during the year, and then next September, have this conversation again about whether or not, I just wouldn't want you to get an impression from one email...
Sure.
That that's a majority, the, the sense I'm getting is that the community overwhelmingly, particularly the parents of children that are trick-or-treating, I don't know that trick-or-treating's really a high school-aged event, I think it's a elementary school aged, were you guys out trick-or-treating this?
I was in freshman year, but other than that...
That's about...
Yeah, so middle school and, and early high school, yeah.
Yeah, it gets a little, but it's a community decision and...
Yeah, right, right, I just wanted to bring it up since, since we did get that email, and I, you know, I've spoken to some of my patients...
What did the email, I didn't read the email, so what, what did it say?
It was an individual who, who wanted a lo, a longer timeframe this...
Wanted to go in later in the dark for high school kids, you know, so...
And it was for high school kids, apparently, the individual had a daughter.
In what timeframe, like four?
Well, yeah, three, three to seven or four to eight.
And it's also not, it's not a, it's not an ordinance, it's not, it's a recommendation, it's a guideline, it's one of those things you use your own judgment too, you know?
Right, it's a guideline to the community as to when they should turn their lights off and stop handing out candy, that sort of thing, yeah, and I, I, I get that as well, so, I don't know, I...
Yeah, okay, well...
Looking back to my childhood, I always thought it was a lot of fun to be running around, you know, very safely, very safely, I was well...
You didn't have any eggs, did you?
Did not have any eggs, and I did not get in any trouble, but...
Can I provide?
Yes.
Three quick experiences?
Absolutely, absolutely.
As a police officer?
As a police officer, I wanna hear.
Here's three things I've personally dealt with.
Sure.
An elder, an elderly lady that shouldn't be driving at night.
Yeah.
Driving through lawns, front yards, and me, me trying to catch up with her because all I could see are her tire tracks to the dew point, to the dew of the grass, at night on Halloween as kids are everywhere, and I finally find her and bring her home, but she was just confused, bewildered, and our children are running around the community.
Was that your neighborhood or your, in town?
That, that's when I was working for another community, but that was a Halloween night.
Oh, that's a posh community.
And, and another event was a homicide suspect that was being chased by thirty-plus squad cars on a Saturday night, Halloween at seven-thirty, came through ten communities and, and crashed. And the third event unfortunately was a small child, about a six-year-old, in the dark on a weeknight about six-thirty, just got away from a very caring, attentive mother, but saw a kid across the street, wanted to go, another person is just driving home, trying to get home, going very slowly down a neighborhood street and struck the, the child that ran in front of a parked car, those are my personal experiences of why I come to the village board and say, this is something I think the community should have a conversation about because the weekend afternoon is a completely different event, you know, and I get it, it's not the spooky thing for the high school-aged kids, it is a different event, and, and, and I'm just sharing with you that I would ask you to keep having a conversation, so maybe next year you can make an, an advise hour, and I'll support whatever you as the, you speakers of the community want, wanna do, I think it's a worthwhile conversation and, and, and what I heard was, this was very much in favor, and they didn't get that spiel from me, all they got was, we're having a conversation in the community, what would you wanna do next year, and the parents of children wanna do it in the afternoon.
So, and, and the Saturday night seemed to be an acceptable idea?
I mean, well, this was Sunday, but...
This was Sunday.
Yeah, it was Saturday or Sunday, I didn't emphasize that.
I'm just saying next, next year.
Next year, weekend, that's what I am...
Saturday would be a nice day.
As opposed to Monday night?
That's correct, instead of Monday night, you do it on the weekend before, and this is what all the round lakes do, zine, gurney, a number of communities have done this for decades, and it seems awkward at first, but when you have small kids, you realize this is really a neat thing.
The weekend's better because I think you're seeing, what you're seeing now too is parents that are going with their children, so you're seeing adults with their children taking, which they're enjoying.
It's special.
It is special.
The nuclear family comes together.
So weekend is...
Yeah, okay, no, I mean, that's, yeah, Saturday would be nice, 'cause then everybody can have a nice quiet Sunday and get sick on candy.
The, the problem with Saturday, I see, is people are more likely to have their own adult parties or events, and then they're...
Well, that's why ending at six is a good idea.
I beg to differ, my head of neighbors...
I'd say Sunday's less likely to have...
I beg to differ for a neighbor, when I was growing up, came and said, trigger bourbon.
Although I think the schools...
He would break, he would order the bourbon.
I think the schools would probably prefer the Saturday because that gives the kids a day.
Right, but still, for ending at seven even, it's not, it's not, I mean, and, and if they've got, if, if, if we're walking around with, with six-year-olds, they're not, they don't have to stay out till seven.
Right.
Then, then go back home at six or whatever, and they're still getting three hours of...
Okay, is there anything else we need to discuss on this one?
We can drop it for now, but I just wanted to bring it up and we'll keep the conversation going.
We, we'll talk about...
We're out the year.
Next, next September, it's an imponderable, okay, what else? Anything else? Old business, recess adjourned, let's do that, okay, is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Go ahead.
Go into committee of the whole, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, you want a roll call of this?
All in favor is fine.
All in favor indicate by you saying aye.
Aye.
All that are against, nays? The ayes have it, I'm an aye, well, I only got one, but I'm an aye, and so in essence, you know, the motion carries, all right, committee of the whole meeting's in order, I'm sorry the kids back there don't know what I'm talking about, but you, you can come up later and I'll give you a biology lesson, so...
No, no, do not.
Okay, I won't, okay, it's kinda scary, I could, you know, wear a man on a chain at Halloween, you know, with that said, all right, is there a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Marport.
Aye.
Horser.
Aye.
Takaoka. Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Shane.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, review of village employee medical dental vision life insurance renewal. Tam, Duran, you can come to the presentation altar with, is Kristen coming up here?
Kristen's not on it, is she?
This will be now. Yeah, I want you to get up to get your circulation going, you know?
Okay.
I got a cane if you want it. Well, the, you, Tam, you wanna state your name for the record and...
My name's Thomas Duran, J-U-R-A-N, I've been the, the agent working on the health insurance for the past ten years, I'm glad I'm here, thank you for inviting me.
Yeah.
Basically, my coverage that I work with is the life insurance, the medical insurance, the dental and the vision, now, I believe everybody received one of these?
Here's the package.
Yep.
Okay, basically, what I wanna do is look at the life, the dental and the vision first. I was able to contact the Dearborn National, our insurance company handling the life and the vision, and they were able to give us a, a hold on a rate for two years, a rate guarantee for two years with no change, so we kinda put that baby to bed, everything seems to be good, and, you know, we've been hustling with the dental coverage, so, you know, this is a renewal letter that we got that I put into the flyer, okay, stating that we got the, we got the guarantee for two years, okay? Next page is my kind of marketing analysis, you know, handling what the rates are nationwide, and, you know, we got a cheap twelve cents life rate here, and you gotta remember, we have a good, you know, we have a lot of police officers in there, and normally, most of the carriers don't like, you know, insuring the police, they raise the rates, and this rate is super, super cheap.
They can't hear you.
Okay, so if you take a look at it, no one's been able to beat Dearborn National for us for the past, what, well, you've been here five years now, you know, it's just eight, okay, I'm sorry, but, you know, it's, so we put that to bed, now, the dental insurance, on the next page, we've, you know, we have a very rich program based on our life insurance, our vision insurance and our dental insurance, we're probably one of the only groups that offer orthodontia for adults and children.
What's that?
You know, none of these other carriers that we went to had the, had the adult benefit there.
They had deductibles about the, if a kid needs braces.
Fifty bucks, yeah, now, today, we got Blue Cross to lower, to lower the dental rate five percent.
From the original renewal.
Yeah, from the original renewal, and because we're gonna, if we stay with Blue Cross, if you guys, you know, decide to stay there.
Yeah.
And if we keep the vision and the dental there, we get a discount of one-point-five percent on our medical.
Yeah.
Which totals three thousand dollars a month, no big deal, but...
No, it's, yeah, it, it, every little bit helps.
But if, you know, there, but if you add it to the dental savings, okay, the dental discount, it's, the dental plan is the lowest over anything I was able to find.
Yeah.
Okay, the next page...
They don't pay anything though for implants, right?
Uh, we have to check that.
It should be covered under major services.
You think so?
Not a whole lot, but, yes, there's...
Yeah, don't hold your breath on that.
It's usually fifty percent, but the, the max...
Oh, but dental implant?
Yes, but the, the implants cost a lot more than the plan covers, so I believe the, the limit on the plan is three thousand for the year.
But that, that you could... But that, that you could use to get, replace a tooth, because Christ, what are they, about four grand? Some are that, or, you know, per tooth.
Yeah, so we'll, we can look at...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, if that, if we got coverage for that, that's, that's, you know, it's nice, you know, maybe you could do one tooth a year for three or four years, really need to replace one.
And, well, the last, well, the last page regarding the vision benefit,
Yeah.
you know, you want to take a look at it, they're all basically cookie-cut type programs, and you might have, you know, one deductible might be cheaper than another, but our plan is superior to the others. Now, I'll put a little blurb in here about me. I've been around for, like I said, ten years.
What page is that one?
That's on... First benefit marketing?
Go past the vision.
Over here?
Yeah.
Tom Durian.
I'm, I went to school at the University of Miami, and I didn't graduate in nineteen ninety, I graduated in seventy. For two years, I taught in the Miami-Dade School System in the inner city. I came up to Chicago in nineteen seventy-two, got my insurance license, and, you know, I've been, we're a group wholesaler. We, agents come to us, your car insurance guy, your homeowner's guy might have, might know his brother bought a company, and he says, "What do I do with it?" They would pick up the phone and call my company up, and we're a national brokering firm. And we put the, we put the package together, we help them analyze it, go out and present it, help them sell it, and enroll it if we have to. We've been doing this for nineteen seventy-two. I got a call twelve years ago from the village, and they said, "Would you like to come up and talk to us about our health plan? We have a self-funded plan, and we'd like another one's opinion." And I says, "You know me, you know, how'd you find out about me?" And they told me that, you know, a couple of agents recommended me, that I've done a good job for them. And I was up there, went to see them. The current carrier was with a self-funded plan, and, you know, we met with a bunch of the board meeting members, and we had the exact proposal as the incumbent agent. But they were recommending staying with the self-funded package. And I'm sitting there looking at a quote from Blue Cross, and the self-funded package had an expected, okay, claim value, let's say of a million, and, but, and a maximum cost of a million five. You know, so we're talking to them, and I'm saying, "Well, that's crazy, Blue Cross is here at a million one. What, why would you do what you want to do with, at a million five?" Well, the other agent also quoted it. I said, "But they didn't tell you what to do. I'm telling you, you're crazy."
Right, right.
Where are you going to come up with four hundred thousand dollars of dollars?
Right.
Cut the mayor's pay. Just kidding. And so eventually, and then we had another meeting with the...
There's folks by a man who doesn't know.
We had another meeting with the board, and then my associate that was with me, we were working on a wellness program.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, we said, "Hey, we could add a wellness plan to the program," and they said, "Beautiful, let's put it together."
Well, basically, Tom, what we went from was pretty much a pure indemnity plan, and the people were paying for a family six dollars and ninety-nine cents, and the individuals were two dollars and ninety-nine cents a month, and it was a hundred cents on the dollar.
That was a long time ago.
No shit. I mean, excuse my French for the students in the back, but there's real money involved here. And, you know, so the bottom line is, we went from, you know, going to PPO, HMO, instead of like, everybody was in the same plan, and it was, it wasn't a Cadillac, it was like a Rolls Royce. Anyway, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, well, your benefits, I mean, were, are amazing.
Yeah, it was, well, they're still excellent, but I'm just saying, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I'll flip it over now. Basically, you got my spiel about who I am.
Yeah.
And then, but here's a history that I did, and, you know, a lot of this is, it goes back to all the rate increases we got over the years versus us negotiating with the current carrier and with other carriers, and showing them that, hey, look, I got, you know, you guys here are giving us a twenty-five percent rate increase, I got another carrier offering us a ten percent deal.
Yeah.
You know, and basically, that's what I do, I bargain with them, I beat them up, I politely, gently, and I don't lie to them. And I, you know, and all, over the years since nineteen seventy-two, I've been able to have a great respect with the different insurance carriers and their underwriters. And that's made me, you know, successful, and so this is what, you know, we saved a lot of money. I mean, we've made, we went from Blue Cross, and then the claims hit high, we moved them over to United Healthcare, we were stayed with them for three or four years, we then went to great, to Cigna, to a, what they call a level-funded program.
Yeah.
Whereas more self-insurance than fully insured, and then we brought them back to Blue Cross. Now, the year before we went to Blue Cross, Cigna, Cigna was offering us a thirty percent increase, and we were able to knock the increase down, I think to zero, something like that, and because of the Blue Cross quote.
So for next year, you're recommending staying with the Blue Cross?
Well, the whole thing is, they're the best.
Okay.
I mean, you know, it's, you can't beat them, we've had no, no problem at all, you know, handling it.
And the, and the numbers we're looking at are...
Well, we'll get to that.
Yeah.
That's coming up.
This is somewhat of a question of it, but do, in fact, due to, I used to be in the automobile business, the, we used to do a co-op. Do programs like this work for small or several businesses that are smaller businesses that need coverage, and they go in a group for a co-op?
Well, they call it association or whatever. The only problem with that type of deal is you, you know, right now you have Obamacare, okay, the ACA, and from two to fifty lives, you can't ask medical questions, which brings me to the next page. Okay? Thank you. We got four fully insured carriers now in Illinois. We have Aetna, a Blue Cross, Humana, and United Healthcare. They are fully insured, they give you a rate, you pay it, and then that's it. At the end of the year, they give you a renewal. Now, all of a sudden, for the last five or six years, there's been what they call a level-funded, self-funded type approach coming out, where they avoid the ACA Obamacare rules by taking everybody, and they require medical condition, they have health statements on small groups, or loss data on large groups. And people, you could save thirty, forty percent of your premium if you have, if you own a company that's under forty, fifty lives. Have your people fill out a health statement, and if it's acceptable, we write them, they might have to load the rate a little bit, but that's, you know, and if it's bad, they just say, no, you know, stay with the ACA. So that's basically the only environment right now with the insurance carriers. Obamacare kind of scared everybody out because you have to take everybody. And that, you know, and that you could take, and that, that killed, well, look what happened to it. They had all these different Obama plans here in Illinois throughout the country, and a lot of them went broke because they, the government stopped funding them. So that's what happened. But now, next page. This is our renewal that we got this year.
What page you on? Have you got yours numbered?
No, it's not numbered, but if you look at this, Dr.
This one?
Yeah. Okay, this is the renewal for the current plan, and you got the current rates and you got the renewal rate. This was the original increase we got, thirty-three point seven one percent. Now, Blue Cross has been beautiful with us for the last three or four years. We've had, last year, I think, we had a one percent increase the year before, and when they bought us, they, they even gave us money for a wellness program, like, they said, on your February premium, we're going to reduce it by sixty-two thousand so you could fund your wellness plan. I mean, they've been, and unfortunately, it hit the fan, and we had all these claims.
If you've gotten a run yet, the loss run for the end of October yet?
Yeah, well, you know, we, no, we have, I think...
Does it look good, bad, or ugly?
I think it, I think it, it ended, it ended in, at the end of September. No, we didn't get Oc-, we get October the fourteenth.
You've got October in the next week.
Yeah, yeah. But it ran, it ran a hundred and twelve percent.
Yeah.
But we'll get to that. Okay, but I want to show you, on this here, if you look at the little box on the bottom where it says changed in risk? You see that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? Now, go to the next page.
Yeah, the A-B-C thing.
Okay, and then if you look at the change in risk again, the next page is they lowered the rate. So when we got the thirty-three percent increase, the risk factor was thirty, thirty-three point six three. When they lowered the rate a bunch, a little bit, I should say, the rate factor went down to twenty-seven, seven, nine. The whole thing is, this is what, you know, this is what the insurance companies do, they do, you know, your group is pretty, is super steady, great population, very little change to it, I think the average age is about forty-eight years old, so you really don't have an older group, and you have a healthy group, we've been doing great for the years. All these years, we've never had a problem, until this year.
COVID.
Okay?
Isn't it an accurate statement as far as the pent-up, the man, nobody could go to, to get medical treatment because of COVID?
In twenty-twenty, yeah.
Am I talking to...
What, I, was that?
So, I think what he's saying is...
Did we have an influx beyond belief in twenty-twenty-one just now, in the last, I don't know?
I'm getting to that.
Well, that's, I'm...
Chill out.
Okay. Well put, okay, but what I'm saying, yes. Yeah, I, we, I'm a, you know, I'm a, I'm a user, I mean, you know, crazy.
The next page is my marketing analysis of the current rates, the renewal rates, the United Healthcare quote that we received from them, and the Aetna quote that we received from them.
Yeah.
And the only, the Aetna quote, instead of offering a zero, right now, we have a zero deductible plan, a five hundred dollar deductible plan, a five thousand dollar deductible plan, and an HMO, okay? Now, United matched the benefits right on the money. Aetna does not have a zero deductible, but they put in a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible.
Yeah.
Okay, but if you look, it's interesting, Aetna was thirty-three, thirty-three percent, thirty-two percent higher than our current. United was thirty percent higher than our current, and if you go back to the original Blue Cross renewal, it was thirty-three percent. So, Blue Cross is not screwing anybody, but everybody, you know, and this is the best quote, this is what happens when you have what you had in the claims. Okay? Next page.
You know, at this point, if this year runs the way it seems to be running with usage up, and you're saying the actual loss experience being a hundred and twelve percent, right?
Yeah, well...
But it could go higher, just because we still got this month left.
Yeah, you'll see, like, flip over to the next, well, the first, the next page is just beheading, okay? And then we go to, this is this year. Okay, this, this is an illustration of our loss.
Let me, can I put my glasses on and see what you, what the illustration? Oh, that one.
It's a medical and pharmacy loss ratio.
I just needed to see them, it's got colors on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it.
It's one twenty-one.
You're not leaving, are you?
No, I'm just going to the watching.
Okay.
Oh, thanks.
Well, you gotta ask permission.
One twelve, it's one twenty-one.
Well, this is their print.
Yeah. This is the, the, our loss ratio is one twenty-one.
Okay. All right, but if you take a look at the blue on the bottom, okay? Now, here's what the insurance company does. Our year goes from December to December one to January, December thirty-first, okay? If you start, they look at the account in nine months, so if you start in December and go all the way over to August, this is the information that they use to develop our renewal rates for the upcoming year. Now, look what happened in April, May, June, and July. Now, the underwriter is sitting down looking what to do to the village of Vernon Hills, and they go, "Wow," you know? And what has happened is, it's the pandemic. The pandemic had everybody not being treated, not going, not going to the hospital, not getting things accomplished.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, they go into it, and then boom. So that is why we hit a thirty-three percent rate increase, and there was nothing they could do about it, and every, and I sent all this information to all the carriers. Now, I've, I've informed Aetna, I've informed United, and I told them that, hey, I'm going to keep on sending you the loss data, you know, for, you know, for the village. Because if you look at the next page, it lists all the major claims that we had.
Now, is that page twenty-two, or twenty-one, or, see on bottom rating?
I never loaded it.
Huh?
It says eleven, but it's not worth it.
No, I know, I know, I'm just looking for the...
I'll be better the next time, okay, guys?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, but on this page right now, it shows that there is currently a million two in large, ongoing claims that are out there. And if you're, now I take this out to market, and the carriers are going, a million two sitting there, you know, and they become unaggressive. The level funding and the self-funding people don't even want to go near it because of the potent liability of what they, if they write the case, what are they going to do next year? Because, you know, and so what we're trying to do is every, you know, every month I get this report, and I send it to the carriers and tell them, hey, hold with it, these claims will disappear. Now, if we get lucky, we don't have anything that replaces it, and we go back to the normal. And, and then we go to the next page.
That's seven, though?
No.
Bottom, bottom rating.
Oh, not the, well, I'm sorry, I'm all screwed up, haven't done this in years.
Are we on page, this page, with the seven on the bottom now?
No, it's twenty-two.
Twenty-two, because eleven, okay, I got twenty-one, I got it eleven.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. I got it, oh, I got it. Well, I don't know, mine's, might have been stapled by somebody else.
Okay, go to the last page.
What, what?
The last page, I'm sorry, people. I guess I'm trying to be informative.
Wait, you want to go to this page, it's got twenty-one on the bottom?
I think twenty-two.
Why does mine say twenty-one?
Is it twenty-one? Is it twenty-one? Oh, to the last, okay.
All right.
Got it.
This is the year before. This is October twen- two thousand-
Yeah.
Through September two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah.
The losses-
Dental, or that's not dental?
Well, you got the premiums, then you got the, I'm sorry. Hey, guys?
Dental is what you're looking at, the last page is dental.
Yes, it's dental loss ratio.
Well, I, I apologize. I missed a page.
Good.
Okay? But la- the year before, do you have that?
It probably just printed out what you had given us.
Okay, the year before ran around seventy-four percent.
At the end of the-
At the, at, at, at the whole year.
Okay.
It ran seventy-four percent.
Seventy-four percent, and what was our going, what was our total premium paid? Two-point-three million?
No, I think it was about two-one.
For everything that, for our eighty percent less the twenty percent of the premium?
Yeah.
Okay, but, all right.
Okay, so, so basically, in that year, we were able to negotiate, what they, they wanted about, I think about a seven or eight percent rate increase. And we were able to negotiate with them, where they knocked the, the increase down to one percent. And I think Christian here kinda squeezed them a little bit, and we probably went under the, the existing rate.
Good.
And, you know, but every year, they've been super good to us. And, you know, they are, you know, I feel the best, their networks are super, uh, there, we've had no real drug problems like we used to have with United Healthcare, where people couldn't get their scripts done. And, you know, so, you know, and that's why I recommend staying. And, uh, and I will do a better job, hopefully, next year, if you don't throw me out of here.
So, bottom line is, we're, we're gonna pay twenty-seven percent more, and that was the best that we could do. Everyone else was in the thirties.
Yeah.
That's basically it.
Yeah, but, you gotta remember something. Everybody, because you got this thing here that jumped up, right, when the underwriters, with all the claims, they were, they were reviewing the account.
But if they even were to look at an average of the last twelve months, averaged out, I mean, there were low initially, and then it was high for a while, if you were to average it out, it's still pretty high-
Still a hundred, about a hundred and twenty-one percent.
Percent of, of what we're paying, that's the percent of what we're actually-
What we did pay for the last, for the current year, which ends November thirtieth.
You're saying a hundred and twenty percent of what we actually paid to them?
Yes, so they lost-
So, they lost twenty percent on, of-
Well, here's the thing, they lost, well, they paid out a hundred and twenty-one percent in claims.
Of what we paid them in our premiums.
Yeah.
So, it's like a four-hundred-thousand-dollar-plus difference, that they paid over-
They paid over what we paid them.
Is what it seems like.
Now, Blue Cross pays, I think it's seventy-five, if we give them a dollar, they pay seventy-five, they, they pay-
Normally.
Seven, seven, uh, we give them a dollar, they pay seventy-five cents in, in claim money.
Nationally.
Yeah, they just, they, they reserve only fifteen percent. You go to some of these self-funded carriers-
Twenty-five.
Huh?
You said seventy-five, fif- twenty-five percent they're reserving?
No, no, if, if you give them, if, we give them a dollar, they, they pay seventy-five percent of it goes to a claim.
Right.
Okay?
And you said they reserve fifteen, where's the other ten?
Well, no, I, I, I made a mistake there.
Okay.
If, if you go to one of the self-funded carriers, they take the same dollar-
Right.
But only apply sixty cents-
Okay.
To the claim. So, there's a big difference of-
Yeah.
You know, why do you wanna, now, they offer money coming back, but how do you get money coming back if you don't have, you know, if, if you're not receiving enough premium to cover the claims?
Well, is, is that, does the admin fees have anything to do with that on the self-funded?
Well, you know, you got the admin fee, you got the taxes, you got the commissions, you know, and you, you got the, you know, what they do is, they, they, as soon as you get a loss ratio, they apply a trend factor. Then they apply taxes to it. And then they put in your administration fees, the commissions, and everything else.
How do you make your money, as a broker?
Well, there's a standard commission schedule.
Is it commission off our premiums that you, is it commission off the premium?
Yeah, it's off the premium.
Paid through by, from who?
Us.
Yeah.
So, we're paying on top of our premiums, or is it baked into the premium?
Baked in.
Yeah, it, it's, you know, you, you go with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, they-
It's baked in.
Yeah, and then Blue Cross-
You know, in other words, we're not having a service fee agreement for-
So, you're getting a bo-
No.
You're from both sides, then, basically, from, from the insurance company and from who you're insuring, correct?
No, no, no.
Commission?
You pay a hundred thousand dollars a month, and they pay me part of that as a commission, and that's it.
Oh, okay.
You know, it, it's what you pay, you know, and, and the schedule works, the schedule works out to maybe three and a half percent, I, I don't know what it is.
Right, right.
You know, but, you know, when you got a two-and-a-half-million-dollar account, you know, it, it's, it's a nice account.
Yeah, it's so big. Well, let's cut to the chase here. You know, we're, we're, okay, for the students that are here, many years ago now, when we had the tiny, tiny monthly payment of six dollars and ninety-nine cents for family, and then two dollars and ninety-nine cents for an individual, we, we instituted, and it wasn't, well, I don't know, maybe it was twelve years ago when you came around, but we negotiated that the employees pay twenty percent of, you know, if it's two million bucks, they're paying twenty percent on that, okay? And then we paid eighty percent. So, two million bucks would be what? Four-hundred thousand? Right? Twenty percent of two-hundred thousand.
Yeah.
The body of our staff, employees.
Yeah. And then we pay the other, you know, one-point-six mil. Where sometimes, people, I don't think pay a deductible, like, like ours, but I think most of them were coming around, 'cause Kevin and I, Timony, had this discussion, what'd you think it was in Wakanda, seventeen, or? Did you find out anything?
I did, there were a, a few PPO plans, the highest PPO plan was an eighty-twenty.
Yeah.
Uh, the lowest was, I think, seventeen and a half employee, village covering the rest.
Attribution.
But Kristen did a, a little market survey of our area, and has some comparables, just to give the board a reference of what the-
And we don't have that in front of us?
I didn't, uh-
Okay, hold on, let me keep talking to Kevin. Okay, so, and when you'd say eighty-twenty, okay, that's the deductible for in-network?
The, that's the premium, so the village would pay eighty percent of the premium, the employee would pay twenty percent.
Well, in that's our town.
That's our town as well.
I know, but in your town, it, it was seventeen and a half, right?
There were, there were different employee, employer shares based on the plan you chose.
Yeah, okay.
So, if you chose the more expensive plan, you'd-
Right. Well, you know, and it, it certainly helps, you know, that we're not fighting the bullet for the whole, you know, two billion plus. 'Cause the bottom line, we're coming in, can I jump to the conclusion, since I've talked to you and everybody else? Is this gonna come in at about two million eighty-five thousand dollars at the end of the day?
If the, um, the retirees who pay a hundred percent-
Well, they, yeah, and, yeah, and that takes out, what, over a hundred grand or more?
Uh, it's, I believe it's substantially more.
Three-hundred thousand. Yeah, it is, it's, it's over three-hundred.
Well, the total here from Blue Cross shows two-hundred-and-eight, eight, eighteen-hundred-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen-
Two million eighteen thousand?
No, it's, uh, monthly, two-eighteen.
No, 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 I, no, no, I want the happy total, grand total. I thought it was two million eighty-five thousand, that's what you kept saying.
This spreadsheet here, this has the retirees taken out-
Yeah.
Uh, retired people covered participants because they pay a hundred and fifty-
And that was what, three-hundred thousand plus?
Yeah, so the total, um, for the medical is the two million eighty-four, and then the villages-
Two million eighty-four thousand.
Correct.
Okay?
And then the villages portion is the one-point-six-six million.
Right.
Yep.
And that's, that's the medical.
Correct.
And the bottom line is two and a quarter.
Yep, and that, that's including the dental and the vision as well.
That includes everything for two million eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars.
No, everything is two million two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand.
Two million, two-
How much is it, including dental?
Yeah, so the medical is the, um, two million eighty-four thousand, right below that, the dental is a hundred and fifty.
Okay.
But we just got about a four-point-one-three percent reduction on this, so that will be about five to seven thousand lower, without the retirees and, and on the vision as well. So, it's two point, about two-point-two-five for the total premiums for all three plans.
Right.
And then our percentages are built in, um, so it'll show you the-
And what was it last year?
Total?
I'm sorry?
Last year?
Last year's total.
Oh, last year, do you have the, the, um-
I got the year before.
Yeah.
What do you want?
Was that last?
The total?
Yep, the total for-
A total medical paid premium. No, I don't have it here, hold on. I got premium from January twen- January twenty-twenty to December twenty-twenty of a premium of one million eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-four.
And it doesn't include dental?
And vision.
That, that's the whole year, a premium.
For all, every line of coverage?
For every, for the medical and pharmacy, not the dental.
Okay.
You know, and that year, that's page seven, I found it, okay? Check it out.
Okay.
It, that year ran seventy-eight point four percent, and that was the year that we were able to keep the rate down to one percent increase.
Okay, so, okay, out the door, we're paying how much more a year, between the two?
Do you know?
Well, is that the, is that the legend on the left, then, if I'm reading that right, is about four, about four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand? If you take out the, the money you talked about taking out, it's gonna be about four-
Difference, again, this has the, um, this spreadsheet here has the, um, retirees taken out, but the total annual premium difference for all covered lives, um, is four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
So, dental?
Is that medical, or is that everything?
That's medical.
That's just medical.
So, the, so the, so the figure of the one and forty-
And drugs.
So, the, the figure of four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand and changes probably-
Yes, the villages' share is, uh, will be three-hundred and, about three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-
Right.
More.
Yeah.
When an employee signs on, what's their deductible for the eighty-twenty split, before they, or employee themselves?
We have four different plans, um, the three PPO plans, we have a zero-dollar deductible, a five-hundred-dollar deductible, and a five-thousand-dollar deductible, and then the HMO plan has zero deductible as well.
So, based on what they choose, will affect the rate, the premium, five-hundred-dollar of a higher premium, obviously, versus the five thousand? And when they choose that, how does it, they're, they're paying twenty percent on that premium, then?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So, no matter what it is, they're paying twenty percent, no matter what their age is, they're paying twenty percent-
Correct.
Of whatever, and then, as when they hit the new age category mid-year, do we, do they start paying more mid-year, or do they wait till the end?
Nobody pays more based on age. Um, we do have retirees who are on the plan, once they hit sixty-five, they go into a Medicare supplement plan. Again, they pay a hundred percent of the premium.
So, a twenty-five-year-old versus a forty-five-year-old player is, has the same-
It's a composite rate. They composite the rates together.
So, how are we weighted in employee ages in our, how many employees do we have? A hundred and fourteen?
Um, we have about ninety-eight full-time, um, employees.
So, my guess is if we were weighted heavily on a thirty-five and younger versus thirty-six and older, no offense, I mean, our premiums would be coming back lower, then, is that how that would work?
Well, you'd need a-
What do you do with composite rate?
You would need a company to give you a list build by age, and they won't do that on eighty-four people.
So, one of the big reasons why our premiums are higher is we have so many retirees on our plan, and the, the age of the member does affect our premium, but it doesn't affect individual employees what they pay. They pay the same premium percentage, yes.
But it's, are we, I don't wanna use, I don't think burden is the right word, but we burdened with the premium because of the number of retirees that are paying a hundred percent of their plan, is that correct?
They are paying a hundred percent, but they're-
So, their advantages to get, they're using composite rate? 'Cause my point is, is do you break out and go by age brackets, and is there a significant, significant, it would have to be a significant savings, but then again, the retirees would end up be paying more if that, if I'm correct?
That, that would be correct, I don't even know if the-
Have you guys ever run those numbers, just to look at it? As, as we start getting up into these high percentages?
They, they bring up the price of poker.
For sure.
The retired people.
Hundred percent.
I mean, that's, that's definitely-
That's part of the, that's part of the agreement, we can't-
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know, that's-
You know, and, uh, a lot of the carriers that refused to quote with me was because of the retired employees. There were too many of them. Their standard is ten percent, and I think ours might be eighteen to twenty percent of the actual population of the group.
At any point, do our retirees move over to Medicare?
So, they do. Most of them will, um, stay on for the drug coverage, because the drug coverage through Blue Cross is substantial. But, um, Blue Cross does have a Medicare supplement, so once somebody turns sixty-five, um, and they enroll in Medicare, they go onto a supplemental program. But, um, we do have a few that stay on, in large part because they do have open claims, they have medical issues, and they just, you know, want that extra coverage to cover beyond the eighty percent that Medicare covers.
And like, and the, the difference between the drug benefit that they could buy on Medicare, you know, on the street, versus what they have now is unbelievable. I mean, it's night and day with the benefits. So, anybody, and, you know, a lot of people that don't have any problem with drugs, then they could go to a Medicare plan. But if, if they have a problem with it, they really, sitting on the, the village plan is the best ride in the world.
Yeah, yeah, well, so be it.
And there's no way of getting really rid of them, right? I mean, you, you can't, because of the contracts?
Yeah, the pension code, um, we are required to offer the coverage, but again, they do pay a hundred percent. But I think when we initially received the quote for, you know, the thirty-three percent and then the twenty-eight percent, um, I've never seen an increase that substantial, so I think we put in an extra amount of work to figure out, um, you know, exactly why. So, not only was our claims ratio a hundred and twenty-one percent, but those one-point-two million dollars in open claims-
Sitting there.
Yeah. Um, so, what I did is, um, conducted a survey for just under about twenty of our comparable municipalities to find out, you know, what their, um, PPO deductibles looked like, what their out-of-pocket max looks like, their premiums, the employer versus employee percentage paid of the premiums, and then the increase. So, initially, the average renewal increase for these nearly twenty communities was only four-point-two-four percent. But when we really dug down to look at the benefits, we have the, one of the best plans here. The average deductible for these municipalities was about six-hundred dollars, ours is zero. The average out-of-pocket maximum was about eighteen-hundred, our zero-dollar deductible plan is one thousand. And then the average premium for a single person was eight-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars, and our plan is nine-oh-eight-eighty-seven. So, while we are seeing a substantial increase, there's no doubt about it, um, we have still a very competitive, um, plan and premium. So, I think that just shows-
Yeah.
That the last few years, we've had an, an exceptional premium.
And what, what's, just from my feeble eggshell mind, okay? We're, we're into this two million, almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, all lines for this year, correct?
Total premiums, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, no, isn't it closer, didn't you say, no, it's closer to two point two five you said when you add in the discount?
Yep, the two point two five, taking out the retirees.
It doesn't include the, what, what's the life, uh, premium? It's not on the sheet in front of me. I know it's not a, a gang of money, it's reasonable, I know that.
A life premium basically is, uh, the annual premium for the life insurance and AD and D is forty thousand, uh, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, so that is tacked on again.
Right.
To the two hundred and, two million, uh, fifty thousand dollars.
About.
Two million, two hundred and fifty thousand. So now we're up to, we're almost up to two point three, okay? So, once again, what did we pay total for the last full year in all lines?
We didn't, and I don't have the, um, life insurance included on here, but.
It's the same because there was no increase.
Okay, but again, medical premium is what for last year? I know what it is for this year.
So that would be the four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar, um, lower, but this doesn't.
Whoa, 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 give me, give me, Kristen, I want the to- okay, what's the total medical premium for last year?
Hold on.
And then, if you're gonna give you the dental and the vision and the life separately, what did we pay going in last year? If it's two, gonna be two million eighty-five thousand dollars just for medical benefits, what did we pay last year?
So I did the math there, Roger. So it's a four hundred, I just wanna confirm, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand increase this year, right?
Correct.
So taking the two eighty-four, subtracting that, you got one point six five seven. Is that right? Is that what you have? One million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand five thirty-nine.
No, but it's not the total.
That's the medical total from last year.
Okay, here, here's the premium.
Including, wait, wait a second.
No, it's not including.
No, no, no.
So you asked for just the medical, but you.
The total, Roger.
Okay, so it's, it's four hundred thousand dollars lower than the going in medical this year. Okay.
Less.
Four hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
The, the premium we paid last year was one mil- one million nine hundred and seventy thousand eight sixty-five. Okay, that was the actual total premium.
One million nine hundred and seventy thousand.
Nine, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight sixty-five point seventy-six.
That was just for medical?
That's just for, for the medical for the whole group for the year.
Okay, and then what were the other dental, vision, and?
So that's, that's including though the, the retirees though, right?
That's correct. Correct.
Okay.
All these numbers included?
No, they don't.
Ah, no, not this one.
So you got three hundred plus in.
So we, wait, 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 we, we did not pay the premium last year for the retirees.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, you like, the, the life insurance last year, we paid once again was forty thousand, uh, and, uh, two hundred and eighty because it didn't change. The dental insurance that we paid, uh, we paid, uh, for dental insurance, we paid, uh, monthly total fourteen, you want, uh, the annual total?
Yeah. Probably, probably a hundred fifty plus, right?
A hundred and seventy-two thousand thirty-nine dollars.
Sorry, which was that?
Dental.
And then for the vision, we paid, uh,
Fifteen, twenty?
Fifteen thousand times twelve, so.
Oh, no.
It's the, it's the fourteen six oh one because there was no change in premium.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a fourteen thousand dollars for the year, right?
All right.
Correct.
Okay.
Bottom line, is there really anything to discuss? Do we have any options?
We, unfortunately, we, um, have looked at all the other carriers. Um, they're all higher than this renewal. But again, with doing the market comparison, I feel much better about where.
Basically, you feel like we had a pretty good deal the past few years, and now we're coming into line with where we should have been, and.
I do.
That's why we're up.
Yeah, we just got hit, that's all. I mean.
Well, we got hit because we were paying lower than, than average for the community, even based on our loss ratio.
Yeah, like I said, Blue Cross was very good to the village.
Okay.
Over the past three, four years. Now, the thing is, is the claims caused this, and they will go away. And luckily, if nothing replaces the claim, the big ones, then we'll go back down to, to seventy-four percent that we were running for probably the last two or three years.
There's some light at the end of the tunnel here if these numbers come in kinda interestingly where you can go back.
To, yeah.
Blue Cross Blue Shield, when he runs through the end of October. I don't know what kind of relief we're gonna get and, and how drastic that number's gonna be, but could we get two percent or five percent?
We, we got five percent on the dental today. If you ask, you, you get. If you don't ask, you never get. I'm just saying.
So this might come in a tad better, but, but, but overall, this is a five hundred thousand dollar increase from last year.
Yeah.
Right, I, okay.
And, and we can't do anything about it?
No, but I guess, no, that is, you're, you know, so yeah, that's, uh, but is that shakeout to an honest, uh, let's see, is that really only, uh, is it four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand?
Well, if you look at the other two carriers and their, you know, their quotes were around, uh, Blue Cross's first quote. So, you know, you know, the actuaries all meet together and figure out factors, zones, whatever, and, you know, to develop their strategy on keeping, you know, on making money and making, you know, you know, and making the group, you know, the, the product competitive throughout the country.
Kevin, can I ask you a question? When you were at Wakanda, what were, what were your deductible offerings to employees?
Five hundred dollar deductible.
That was your base, so nothing?
That was the only one.
That was the only one. I mean, well, I don't know what the agreements are with the employees. What would it look like if we only offered the five hundred? Wouldn't we have a significant savings at that point?
I bet it's twenty grand a month.
Yeah, we, we looked, we ran those numbers, so right now, if, if we took everybody that was enrolled in the zero deductible plan and they moved to the five hundred dollar PPO plan, uh, this year would save.
Seventy-nine in the zero.
I'm sorry?
Looks like you got about seventy-nine in the zero.
The, yeah, the vast majority of our employees are in the zero deductible plan, so that would be about a hundred thousand dollar savings for this year.
Okay, so it's ten, ten to twelve thousand a month.
Correct.
That's better than sticking.
Why, why would somebody not choose the zero deductible?
Here's, here, whoa, that, you know, chief, anytime you wanna jump in, we gotta go back to the collective bargaining agreement with the police.
Yeah, that's.
That's why it's zero.
Okay. That's why I wasn't sure with the agreement.
That kinda say succinctly enough? That's why we couldn't play with it and save some money off of this grant total, so, okay.
We, we figured ninety-four percent of the people are on the zero deductible plan.
No kidding. Yeah, okay.
And, and that's what already been agreed.
Could, could, uh, I don't know if Mr. Ferrelli can see my, um, if we're gonna get into a conversation about collective bargaining issues, could we do that during, um, exec session or something?
We're not gonna do it tonight. We don't hear.
If, if there's a question.
Yeah, okay, so. What'd you say, Mike, uh, last year's total premium was? One million nine hundred and what? Fifty-seven thousand and some change?
Eight fifty-seven, I think.
Wait, wait. I thought you figured out last year.
He did, he did, but it was.
The, the, the medical alone was last year was not, not including the retirees, from what I understand, one million six hundred and fifty-seven thousand five thirty-nine.
Me, our paying?
In total, that was the premium pay. That was, that's.
For all lines?
For medical, not for dental and vision and life.
Medical, not including retirees.
The retirees are about three hundred and thirteen thousand added into that.
Okay, so that brings the hippie total up to the one, one point nine million.
Right.
But does that include all the lines, the vision, the dental?
No, it did not.
Just the medical.
Okay, okay.
I don't.
All right. So what do we add on to the one, one point nine million, one million nine, nine hundred thousand dollars from last year?
Well, you had.
We had the, the fifty mil- fifty thousand for dental, the fourteen thousand for vision, and forty grand for life, right?
Right.
Okay, so that'll bring it all up to.
Two million two hundred, is that correct?
From last year even, we were over two million bucks. Okay, well.
With retirees?
With everybody. Well, I mean, wasn't the going in?
This isn't.
So you're saying, and the doctor will correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying we paid, if, if you include the retirees', uh, uh, premium, what, what amount in your mind? If you include their premium in the, and it is included in this bottom line quote? Okay, so what was it last year? You told me earlier.
No, no, what, what we were talking about is not including the retirees.
Not totally.
Yeah, well, we never, well, yeah, we don't pay for them, but it's in this grand total. Okay. All right, I, I guess you'd reduce whatever number we come in at this year by three hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, well.
Well, right?
She has those figures, the.
So initially, last year.
So if we're at two million four right now because of all the lines, and we take out the retirees, we're down to one point nine million, right?
Yes, but last year, we paid, um, about five hundred and forty thousand, I think it was five forty thousand less. Um, but that, that included, that figure included the premiums for the retirees. So this year, when we were analyzing and looking at, wow, I mean, this is over a half a million dollars.
Yeah.
Then we said, okay, well, let's take those retirees out to see what our real.
Right.
Difference will be. And that is the, the four twenty-seven, but the village's portion of that is about three forty-two, and that's just on the medical. And then for the dental, um, the increase, um, for the village is about eleven thousand. So the increase, um, for the village over last year with the retirees not included in this figure, um, is about three hundred and fifty-three thousand.
For medical, dental, and vision?
Correct.
So what, what would you two analysts say our actual increase is in a percentage right now, from last year to this year?
Forty percent?
I thought, yeah, I thought you got it down to twenty-seven percent.
Yeah, um.
Or is that not?
I don't know. Now, now, I'm sorry, I'm almost sorry I asked the question.
The medical is just twenty-six percent.
Yeah.
Okay, and everything else stayed constant, uh, so I'd say twenty-six percent.
So, okay. Is everybody comfortable with that answer?
Well, I'd like to have some final numbers before we go back to board level with this, so.
Yeah.
So we're not, because the numbers have changed because of the added discounts you talked about and everything like that.
Yeah, so I did add the additional one point.
If we can have some real, serious final numbers.
And these, my figures here have that one point five percent off too.
They are. Yep, that's.
And since we don't have a finance director here, what, what amount did the village actually write a check for last year? Kevin?
I don't have that number with me. I could, I can find.
Let's get that number, okay? Cause this number, we're gonna, this year, we're gonna write a check for how much the village.
And you're talking plan year, is what you're looking for?
I'm talking, you mean last year?
Yeah, when you say last year, you mean?
Well, the last full year. This is the, okay, through, through, I guess, uh,
Yes, the insurance plan year.
December first, you know?
Okay.
And then this year, what, what, as we speak tonight, what's the check we're gonna write? How much is the check we're gonna write this year?
Under two million six hundred thousand.
How much is it?
Two million six hundred thousand.
We're gonna write, the village itself, that's our eighty percent share. No, no, I, I, I don't, I don't know those figures.
Seventeen ninety-five. I'm just talking about total. Any of the numbers you got here, that's why I wanted.
Seventeen ninety-five is what it says here, the village's total premium for medical, dental, and vision. I don't know about the life and the other, those are small amounts, but probably with another fifty thousand.
Yeah, so we pay a hundred percent of the premium to Blue Cross.
Right.
The deductions come out of the payroll for the employees, the retirees.
Twenty, yeah, twenty percent.
Correct. The retiree premiums come out automatically from one of the retirement plans, either the RHS, the IMRF, or the.
So we get reimbursed right, even though we pay the grand total.
Correct.
We get the three fifty back in our herd.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, we get it at the, um.
Again, I guess, I, I just wanna know what we actually will write our check for. Our check. What, at the end of the day? That's what I, at the end of the day, I wanna know what it costs the village. Let's, let's take this, this existing year company, you know what I mean? In other words, we gotta take the three hundred thousand out, right?
Right, so seventeen ninety-five plus the, plus the, the life and what was the other?
Dental, life, and, uh, vision. And vision's nothing, it's like fourteen.
So what's the life nut for, for the year?
Twenty thousand.
Okay, so seventeen ninety-five plus twenty thousand. Is that it?
Yeah.
One, eight, one.
Yeah.
Now, don't you pay a hundred percent of the life?
I don't know.
Ninety-nine percent.
Ninety-nine percent, okay.
There you go. Well, that, that adds to our total. So, so the.
Twenty thousand.
Employees don't contribute anything to that, right?
One, one percent. Which is, which is about thirty-four cents a month.
Whoa, that's a great deal. And, and you wanna tell us, Christian, what the benefit is?
Uh, the benefit is three times the employee's annual salary.
Pretty good, eh, guys?
Up to a maximum of two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, not bad, eh? Chief?
A max of two fifty.
Deputy, deputy chief? Yeah, okay, go ahead. Same on dental, same on vision, we pay almost a hundred cents on the dollar?
Vision, we pay a hundred percent.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, why don't we bring all those issues back to the bargaining table because it's next year? And talk not, you don't, with the union and the dispatchers, okay? All right, well, we don't have a final, final number from last year or this year. You know?
I, I could give you one for, you know, for my account, but not from the village's account.
Well, I'm just talking about what we, the village ultimately pays. I know we're getting reimbursed.
Yep.
So what's the bottom line amount that the village will pay? We're gonna get reimbursed the three, three fifteen, three forty from the retirees. And then, and then we're gonna get twenty percent from the employees, okay?
On medical and dental, but not vision, correct?
I, I.
That's what, I know that's.
I don't know.
Yeah, dental's actually a seventy-five, twenty-five split, but that isn't.
All right, so factor all that in and then just run it up. So you wanna know what?
Yeah.
It's right here. I mean, it's, the only thing that's, the only thing that's now listed.
Those numbers have changed because of the discounts, so that you're talking about.
Yeah. What's that?
Roger, do you have this page?
Oh, okay, dental discount, okay, so my.
Yeah, that's what.
It was down like seven thousand, okay.
Looking.
So it's eighteen, eight, one point eight oh eight, I guess.
The current, or that's gonna be for next year.
That's next year's.
So if you subtract out the purple, that was last year.
Yeah, okay, well.
Yeah.
Okay. So if it's only twenty-seven percent, so be it, but I, 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 I'm, am I absolutely sure it had percentage? I don't know. I mean, we got a lot of numbers being about here tonight. Okay.
We can send the spreadsheet that has the retirees still included on it, um.
Can you make a new spreadsheet for us that I have?
Why we, you know, call the finance director and get the answer on what we paid last year. Is that okay, Kevin? I can't see Kevin. Where is he? Did he leave?
Yeah, we can get that.
Yeah, let's, you know, come on, you know, there's gotta be a breakout. It's to the penny, you know?
Yeah, and just to be clear, so the, the, the check we pay monthly is based on our, our membership. That fluctuates month to month based on people retiring, new hires coming on.
Yeah.
So we can get you the actual numbers, but I think to, to make it apples to apples, we're talking about the rates going up twenty-seven percent. So apply that to whatever our census is, that's gonna drive the number. So, you know, for example, I wasn't on the plan last year, I'm on the plan now. Mark was probably single coverage, I have single plus child, so a different premium, so it's gonna.
You took the, you, you won a five hundred dollar deductible, right? You took the, you, you want a 500 deductible, right?
Absolutely.
And you, but you're, and you're taking it, right?
I, I will be, yes.
Yeah, you do that. You don't have to, if that employee, okay, I, I, yeah, just give us some, you know, answer some of these questions we've thrown out there.
Yeah, I think what we can do is simplify some of this information, the one challenge we're up against, because normally, we would already have this approved by the board.
Right.
Because we, we had the high renewal, we wanted to go back to market and see if we could get that lowered, our plan year begins December 1.
Yeah, yeah.
So for us to facilitate our open enrollment, typically, we would have the direction tonight, we would have this approved at the next meeting on the 16th, so...
I would think everybody's gonna enroll, and they're already enrolled.
Sure.
And if there's a handful coming and going, it's not gonna be too much work for Christian, correct? All right, all right, let's move on, I don't know.
Can I ask a question, is there, uh, I mean, do, do you wanna stay with the Blue Cross program?
Yep.
Okay. No, I'm just saying.
I don't wanna start...
No, no, I'm talking about down the road.
And we have been taught, all we've been talking about is Blue Cross Blue Shield for a month now, and it's fine. Yeah, we're staying with that.
Okay.
So, you know, you know, it's just...
But I'll continue to get...
Well, keep doing whatever you need.
I'm gonna get lower rates so I could bring it to blues.
Because this isn't, you know, it's a lot of money.
I got you.
And then, you know, when we get to the P and C, that, that's, you know, that's gonna be a lot of money, but not like this, you know, property and casualty, work cap, that kind of fun stuff. Those saved after another night. Okay, uh, other than that, we got...
I, I apologize for the page screw-up, okay?
Yeah, that's, well, so be it, there's, I know there's been a lot of stuff going back and forth, and it's fine, you know, you can redo yours, so you look better.
No, I'm gonna number the pages the next time.
Yeah, do something, okay? All right, with that, yeah, thank you. Just, you know, it is what it is, Christ, it's, it's a nutty world we live in. Consideration report and recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for an amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to zoning appeals and variations. Who's taking this one?
I'll, I'll take this one, Mr. Mayor.
And this one you're gonna do quickly?
Uh, very quickly. Um, you know, over the past, actually, for the past several years, we've had difficulty keeping the ZBA completely staffed, and within the recent past...
Right.
We've actually received three resignations because people are moving out of town, two of which are retiring, which is nice, which means we only have three members left, and after consultation with the mayor and direction from the mayor...
Yeah.
Uh, the decision was to draft an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would transfer responsibility of the ZBA to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our village attorney's office drafted those amendments, and the Planning and Zoning Commission considered the, the draft language at a public hearing on October 27th, and after review and discussion, the commission voted with six in favor and zero against to approve an amendment to the zoning code that would transfer the authority from the ZBA to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also dissolve the ZBA. That draft language is attached to your packet, and for tonight, if the board concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to do the amendment, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance in accordance with that draft language, again, that's attached to your packet.
And, and counselor, we're okay?
Yes.
Statutorily and all that fun stuff?
Well, council, what is, what is, because you represent a number of communities in that, what is the standard practice? Because, I mean, on the face value, having the zoning board vote 6-0 on this, that's like the fox saying, "Yow, guard the hen house." What is, is a standard practice that zoning boards do that? Because we've always had, you know, the ZBA is separate.
Yeah, what you, what we've seen over the years, most recently, is consolidation just like this.
Because it's been harder to get people to cover.
To get volunteers and...
Plus, you know, very few items come up.
And, yeah, that's, that's a great point, that the ZBA only really handles appeals of decisions of the building commissioner and variations.
Right.
They have a very limited role, that can easily be handled by planning and zoning. In other towns, it's called a planned commission, it's a, it's a pretty common practice, and I think we're catching up to that trend with this.
Okay.
You know, going back in time, when you were on there, Tom, I mean, Chris, you were dealing with, you know, what, fence issues and addition issues?
Yeah, there was a lot more, there was a lot more then, but there isn't now, so, yeah.
But anyway, okay, uh, wanna make a motion to approve?
Motion to direct staff to bring the proper ordinance to the, to the village board.
Okay, is there a motion, can I extend?
Second.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call, please.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Markort.
Aye.
Forester.
Aye.
Takaoka. Cook.